I know, I know.
Oh, I thought you were still talking about the dogs.
Yeah, this is what we use for a teacher observation and stuff because they just put this on them and it's a microphone. And it follows them around the room. That way they can teach and it's kind of a self-reflection thing and they can turn into an admin for feedback.
It's made different national boards.
It's a great, I would be, it's a great tool. We've, we've got them in all our, we've got three of them, I think, and they are excellent for feedback. You know, you get to watch it, watch it as often as you want to and then replay, hey, how did I do this or what did I miss here?
It's amazing when you see yourself do that you never knew. Mine, and almost everybody has a story, the first time they saw themselves teaching. I was doing this all the time. I wouldn't big plastic glasses.
I had no idea though.
Right, no idea.
I still do what I caught myself doing a hundred years ago when I first saw myself on video teaching and I still do it. I've tried all these years to stop. I teach with my hands and, you know, y'all probably.
You talk.
I teach with my hands, I talk with my hands, everything is animated. And my wife will say, you gotta quit doing that. People think you're mad. She's going down.
I got, I got called out. Mine is, I do this. I'll just add little.
It's like a tick or something.
Exactly.
It's just the glasses all the time.
And just about everybody has it.
Yes.
Something.
Yes.
And they, as soon as they watch themselves on video, they're like, oh man.
Oh, that's why I'm gonna teach your public speaking, tell them, don't touch the face, no matter what, because that's what people usually look at. Their nose or something. It looks bad.
Yeah, it's true.
Is he driving all the way from Mississippi?
I don't know. I haven't.
Did he, I mean, he responded, he was up there. Yeah.
As he teaches, he drives there to teach.
Let me just go over here and make sure the text message goes out the window.
That's a long time. I think that's what he told us. He teaches at either Elizabeth, State University or Elizabeth.
Cameras, one of the places I work, that were supposed to track voices and faces.
Hey, Tim.
We found out pretty quick that.
You got a laser looking for any large round objects in the room? Oh, we're upstairs. Just go upstairs. I'll be out in the hallway. Hold on.
It's gonna be a balloon.
A balloon or, yeah.
That's funny.
Zoom, if I zoom right in, it was very uncomfortable.
Must be that four thirty notification. Some kind of schedule police, that's funny.
It's for interims.
Yes.
Kelsey, Kelsey told me when I first started working for Pecosin Co.
There he is.
In a meeting, you know, who went off the computer, it was on the phone and up in the back.
Oh.
And that same thing happened. She didn't know it. She'd make a sound, it makes you the person.
Oh, yes.
She said, all of a sudden, it just wouldn't play. And she never got back on. I said, why? She said, hey, we're theirs for, I said, be theirs for.
Right.
I bet she sure.
I'd tell you.
It was so fun.
No, no, I, some of them are middle baseball tryouts.
Oh, okay.
Make sure you go. I guess we'll do this. We ready? I'd like to call to order the special work, or special school board meeting for February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Okay, today we're going to make, we need to have a motion to approve funds for, already I'm gonna need some help here.
Yeah, we're gonna, if you don't mind just letting us do our presentation first, then we'll, you can call for the motion. We'll tell everybody, because we're gonna answer probably ninety-nine percent of the questions first.
Okay.
And then if there is some debate, that's some discussion, you, you know, you'll take care of that in your motion, if that's all right.
That works perfect. Sorry about that.
No, it's all good. This is an unusual situation. We were hoping to be ready to present this in the February meeting. And then we were, there was a couple of pieces we were not quite ready for, waiting on some information, some final information from the vendor. And then it had to be done before the March meeting because there's a, a D-Day on purchasing equipment with a certain type of freon. Is my understanding. And Andrew will go over all the details of that. But that's why we're bringing it now. But this is not new to those of you who've been on the board for some time. This has been on the CIP, I think, since two thousand eighteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. You know, long before I got here. The HVAC system, which is a boiler-chiller system at Pecosin High School's been in place for many, many years. And is, I think, about ten years outside of its normal lifespan. And it's gotten a lot of Band-Aids over the years and been kicked down the road because it, as you see, in this project cost, it's very expensive. HVAC systems for public buildings, especially schools are extraordinary. And we'll, Andrew will go through kind of the whole history of this to get to where we are, but the short answer is, it's gotta be done this summer. One more winter, especially with that boiler. Everybody that's looked at it says it's, it's not gonna make it. So, you know, when, when the weather turns cold, everybody that knows anything about this boiler, all of our maintenance teams, the administration, we all cross our fingers and pray that we get through this cold snap with, it's got metal chips in the oil, all the signs that this thing is on its last leg. Andrew will also talk about some numbers of what we've been paying out annually to cripple along with this system. And the new system that he'll talk about, of course, is one we've just become very familiar with, having just installed it at primary school. For all intents and purposes, the same system with significant cost savings over time. So, that's my T L, that I'm turning over to the expert who's been living and breathing this for several months.
So, just a quick recap, if you've not been, you know, kind of up to date with what the current state of the system really is, and he kind of alluded to a lot of it. You know, we have a VAB system with a boiler, chiller and tower at the high school. Like you said, I think it was twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen sometime. Some components were a part of the CIP project starting then. So, it's been, you know, significantly limping along since then. So, just since I started, I can attest, the, the water chiller, tower, it's got a bad leak in it. If you go right now where it's been freezing temperatures, there's icicles, biggest trees coming from it. And, you know, with that system being able to use the water evaporate, you know, that's eating a lot of our utilities trying to replenish that water to get heat or cool or whatever we're trying to do within the building. Replacement parts, I'll get to the slide in a minute, but, you know, again, even since I've started this position this past summer, multiple Band-Aids have been having to put on the controls. You know, we were having some ignition problems and even a gas leak in one that we had to treat pretty rapidly because of, you know, safety measures and that. So, you know, significant repairs, you know, if I had to put a word on it, I put significant, well, boilers and chiller towers. The rooftop air handler units, you know, all of those internal and external rust is putting it mildly. Even the internal ones are, you know, really showing their age with the systems. And I would confidently say the majority of the controls on each one of these boxes are being manually controlled at this point. You know, Chris Riley and the staff have done a great job to keep it, you know, reasonable within temperatures. By no means it's been perfect. But again, we're having to control each component. And that definitely takes a lot of man-hours around the clock. And a lot of frustration, you know, for teachers saying, hey, it's hot, it's cold, and us having to react to that. Piping is also starting to leak, the seals, when the temperature changes in the pipes, as it cools down, they start leaking, we turn it back up, they'll start sealing themselves in the chemical. You won't see a little paint dye that's hitting the floors. And again, no consistent temps at all. So, the history, like we've been saying, it's been on CIP for quite some time. Two years ago, really, the full system hitting the, and trying to press hard for that. Past three years, thirty thousand dollars worth of repairs, you know, easily with the motors, the control units, the different components, it's totaled that. And then ten thousand dollars annually just for us to, you know, function with this unit for the utilities. The sewer water being the most significant source, like I said, it's, it's got a big leak, it runs off water anyway, so it's gonna draw. And it just, it's hard to keep it going in the current state that it's in. And that, that tower has a lot of dislodged pieces in it, for sure. All right, so the quote, and I put original lightly, this is kind of like where it started, with the full system replacement to get down to, was the two point eight. We were quoted three point five last summer from work and it was for the VRF system, so moving from the VAB to VRF. It was more efficient, definitely priced, you know, favorable for us. And then definitely, they said that the, the cooperative contract that we used for the primary school was still open and we could use that, which expedites this whole process, not having to go to vid and, you know, take all that time. The four point two that we finally got it down to, we did make cuts around five hundred thousand dollars for the project from the four point seven, which was the original proposal that came in from Warwick. They did bring it down considerably for us, but those cuts did not impact the performance of the system. Usually you hear that word, valued engineered. That wasn't the route that they tried to take. We, we still remain with integrity of the system. They really just left certain components that didn't necessarily have to be taken away, that no longer have function. They would just make them safe, drain them, cap them, and then it would be up to us, you know, one day to try to get money out of scrap or whatever we wanna do. So, that's where the cuts went. And then there was only one really section of the building they had to redesign, which was that A-Hall Forum Band and Course Room area. It's really the larger spacer rooms. And they were gonna share a unit with some gas packs, which was a little bit different than the VRF kind of does as a whole. But just to make sure that we still had temper control in those areas and they're the bigger spaced areas. So, a little bit different. If you don't know how this kind of operates, it's refrigerant based. It, it has an outdoor unit that controls many indoor units, so that's the efficiency piece. And it does provide individual zone controls. It's not like our current system where it's either on or it's off and you poke the whole building to the standard temperature. But it does give control to different zones. And like I said, it's more energy efficient just due to the, the less of the carbon footprint and the, the method that uses the heat and cool. And we'll get to that in a second. Warwick, you know, asked for them, you know, when we started this process, you know, give me some data on the efficiency. We gotta keep on hearing it's more efficient, it's more efficient. They've said over the, the past five years that they've been putting these units into other spaces, that they've seen anywhere between twenty and forty percent decreases in utilities and definitely maintenance costs for those systems overall over time. So, these are some of the things that would eliminate. We would not have to treat any water, so the water pumps are out, the chemical to do that is out to treat the water. And the, the rooms would start receiving the exact amount of fresh air that's needed. And it's not just for the, the air quality, that's one piece. Because there are some regulations, you have to have so much fresh air in the building. But it also will allow it to run more efficient. And that, if it's a cooler day outside, it can open itself up and utilize that instead of spending its own energy to create that cool. So, right now, it's, you know, we could do that, but, you know, you're, you're not drawing much air in that current system that we have. So, it is an efficiency method it uses. We currently use Johnson controls for all our systems until we start replacing systems within the division. Like, this one is no longer on Johnson, the primary school's no longer on Johnson. And this one is another opportunity to move away. And the only reason why I bring that up is it, it kind of creates a system where we have to cater to their needs instead of the other way around. And it kind of gives us an, an opportunity to branch away and have a little bit better pricing and options. They're talking about using train and Mitsubishi is the two components. They're talking about this particular build, which will give us a lot more range on the controls. The water bill, like I've stated before, it uses evaporate water prepared system, that's not gonna be a thing anymore. And then, like I said, the carbon footprint from it burning all the fuels is, is gonna decrease significantly. This is kind of like the, the funding breakdown here. Originally, the quote two point eight increased to three point five last summer. We got approved at seven hundred thousand for, from the carryovers. And then we're here today to kind of pitch to y'all to try to get a proposal to approve the one point five from our capital improvement project funding. That we would in turn use some carryover funding for whatever we needed to replenish after this is over, to make sure that those capital improvement projects that are slated to go. There's six of them on this one point five number, under rather, to be able to still be on schedule, still be able to do it without a missing beat. To name a few, the jail roof is on it for eight hundred thousand. There's some resurfacing for the parking lot there at the high school, some telephone work, some more network work and some other things that are just gonna total those six projects within that one point five. But with this plan, we'd reallocate the funds enough to meet the market that four point two eight that we need to. And then we have the funds and carryover to replenish, so we're not, you know, messing anything up as far as our current CIP. So, of course, the goal for this project timing would be to start, you know, as soon as the kids and everybody finish up there on June. And then significant completion and not fully complete before everyone returns back for the new school year. Warwick is confident they can meet our timeline. The timeframe that he was saying we were coming close to for the refrigerant. The current system they have engineered, which is the one they highly recommend, is on the R four ten. That's switched over, I think, over regulations by twenty first, you had to have it in, you know, then it switches to the R four fifty four. They're kind of working with us right now to make sure that that can still happen if we get this thing approved. But, you know, if not, then that would require us to go over to the new refrigerant, which they guarantee would increase prices and would have to reengineer the whole system because it's built on the four ten, not the four fifty four. There's some different components that would have to be added. So, you know, without, you know, approval there, we're, we're kind of jeopardizing that summer bill. And definitely going on to a new system, which, you know, nobody has a, a telltale on it now, if it's good, bad or ugly. It's kind of that leak, if you take the, the first of any type of product, you know, the, the kinks that they have to work out and things of that nature. So, you know, they recommend a highway to try to avoid that, just to, you know, because we're a school and funding and, you know, there's, there's a lot of human beings that we see in our buildings every day that we don't want uncomfortable. And that's basically it. So, if you have any questions, we're definitely here to answer.
Okay. So, this, the switch to R fifty four is required by law, by the new law?
Yeah, ever so often the refrigerant changes. There used to be R twenty two, and I mean, it goes up a lot of series of numbers.
This has been known for a long time, because I've been hearing ads about it. Even when we got our new system two years ago, they were, they were saying, you know, the. So, I, since this has been known, I, I just wanna know why, or why did they wait until the very last minute to say, hey, we have to approve this now? Otherwise, we're gonna have to go with the other refrigerant. You know, I mean, it's almost like, I, I don't wanna say I feel manipulated, but it, it feels kind of not great.
Yeah, well, I can explain that a little bit. When these companies are, are building a proposal to retrofit a system, they always try to get you the best deal they can. And, and they wanna sell the product they know how to sell. And that's, when we first started talking to them about that, everybody was expecting us to do this project as early as possible. We really wanted to do it last summer. There was no chance of getting it approved and the money available. If you remember that, well, a little backdrop on this, the city used some finance funding for that two point eight million dollars that's already been earmarked. So, that whole process was going on with planning to put in, the technology was at the time, the R.
Four ten.
Four ten was the plan. Knowing that if, for some reason, we didn't get to the finish line in time, it would go to this new system. I, I don't know that they would mind pricing out the new system and putting that in. It's just gonna be more expensive and, and the question about whether they could get the product and get it installed this summer is an unknown. So, I, I don't think it was intentional or anything, there's no conspiracy in it. I don't think they care which units we buy. But everybody we've talked to, another important piece that we did mention, we've been working with our consultant, who's been a part of Pecosin Schools consulting for all things facilities and maintenance since we started on this project. Keith Webb, who's the retired building and maintenance director for Newport News Public Schools for many, many years. And Keith also, after he finished our project here, he went to work with the city of Pecosin as a consultant with the safety building that's near completion. Well-known around the region, he knows school, large facility maintenance and facility planning inside and out. He's been involved in, in this process and, and feels confident in the product we're buying, that it's good for this project. As well, we just completed the pretty much identical product, project with the same product at primary school and they're, we're extremely happy with this.
Kind of to follow up, just, so, but the, the old refrigerant will continue to be available in perpetuity or?
Well, I mean, I don't think anybody has, yeah, has a crystal ball about that, but they will.
I was gonna say, you can still get R twelve, which has been banned for, you know, almost thirty-five years. You can still get twenty two. You can still get it. So, it's not gonna be an issue from that standpoint.
And you probably, depending on when your home was, was built, you'll have some version of one of these refrigerants as in your own person.
It comes, if it's fifteen years from now and there's only so much left, it's supply and demand.
Sure.
You know, recharge your whole system.
That was my question, yeah.
It's almost expensive to get a new one.
And, and to be clear, they have not outlawed production of four ten yet. They have outlawed the production and distribution of new systems beyond a certain date.
That use that.
Yeah, that use that. So, you know, they wait quite a few years before they turn around and stop production of said freon.
It's like a phase out.
Right. Um, I was gonna touch back on, you know, just for, and this is probably benefit for, you know, for, for the three of y'all. We would be having this discussion right now if the price didn't move.
That's right.
You know.
All of this was already approved by the board, approved by the city council. And we used carryover funding to get from two point eight to three point five. And now, here we are, three point five has turned into four point three. And my guess is, if this doesn't happen quickly, that number, if we don't get this project underway and done this summer, that number's gonna be five point six, or who knows why. And especially being that the, the toggle to the new equipment that uses the new refrigerant. Everybody, including the consultant, has suggested that number is gonna be a significantly higher number than the current. So, that, that is an important piece. Michael, glad you brought that up. This is not life new. We just started talking about this. We had to kick this can down the road for, from funding from when we put it, the, the new number, two point eight, was two years ago.
Well, then you also don't have control of that.
That's right.
Because it's the city that approves the money, approves the CIP.
Right.
So, even though you might have liked to do it in twenty eighteen or whatever, the city with other projects tries prioritize, like we did do your moving around.
And the two point eight was not earmarked for this project until summer of twenty five. So, it was not, you know, available for us to, to do earlier. And schools have the unfortunate situation of having to do projects like this in June, July and August. We don't have the luxury of doing those, those projects in November.
One question, Andrew, do you know about when that, that the original vacuum system, the full system was put in the last time?
Years back? Yeah, so, back in twenty sixteen only, I think the tower was included in that. And over time, the different components start showing up. But I think the full system really didn't surface until when, like twenty twenty-two?
Twenty-two, I think, is when it, when the whole package was put on CIP. And again, this is, I think, the original unit to this.
Oh, that's what I was.
To this building.
These are original.
Yeah, these are thirty-year-old.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I.
And the lifespan on these, I think, are twenty-two years. So, Pecosin has been living on borrowed time. And the same was true for the primary school, which was our other oldest building, which had the original.
Okay.
And that was a two-pipe system, not to get into weeds on that. But it was kind of an experiment at the time. And I think everybody realized as soon as they installed them in a few places, this doesn't work. And so, Pecosin Schools has, has been dragging that albatross around for, since the beginning of that, when that school first opened.
Which I think is one of the concerns we're talking about, even if we went to the new one, we paid more for it, we get it. And then we run into it becoming an albatross down the road. I like the idea that this is proven and it's been known and all that. Also wanna thank all of you for working out a way to move that, the money that we have to three point five. With the understanding that we're still gonna be able to keep the other projects, it looks like, on track when we go to the CIP. And so, I mean, everything I've seen, I, I like it. And I really don't see that, in my mind, we have a choice. It's the most cost-effective option. And I think the fact that we're cooperative and we've saved money right up front with that. Again, kudos to new staff, the dental lines, so, they're the only questions.
And just something else that I think is important to mention, we've been involving the city throughout the process. So, as something changes, we notify them. The city manager's well-informed about this and is in agreement that this is the right way to approach this project with this sticker price, knowing that something else could happen. Now, something we haven't talked about, and anytime you go in an old building and do anything, you always risk asbestos abatement. And we always know that going into a project, but until you've done the, the audit on the building, you don't know what, what you're dealing with. So, having one point five contingent funds that are already approved, you know, that's already proved for us to use this summer for capital projects, gives us room in the event we run into something unforeseen. They drill into a wall and there's some asbestos, asbestos that needs to be abayed. None of that is cheap. So, I, I feel good about the fact that we're not, you know, right to the wire on, on a dollar figure. We've got this money to use and then we will use vacancy savings carryover to, to restate that, those finances for those other projects that are already included on CIP. So, there's some moving parts, but again, the city's involved in that and blesses that process. And the money is available because it's already earmarked through CIP that's proven.
My only question, which I think you've touched on a little bit, but the consultants, the contractors, there is, and I guess no one has a crystal ball, but kind of to your point, Melissa, that, I mean, there's no known that this freon that is, you know, currently outlawed in new systems. I mean, is there a risk that ten years down the road, we are not at the useful life of the system, yet we have another very large purchase to make because we can't get freon to fill the unit? I mean, I, I don't, that's not really my real house.
That's a good question.
I mean, I tried to do some looking, but is that, is that a concern, that we're spending all this money today where we're not gonna get through the units useful, or the systems useful life before the refrigerant, if that makes sense?
That's a very good question. And, and again, without a crystal ball, you don't know the answer.
Right.
Generally speaking, this product is being sold all day long today. And, you know, we have somebody who's somewhat of an expert here, could probably answer better than me.
I would probably say that our risk is very, very low. I mean, there's always a risk there.
Sure.
But, you know, if you were to turn around and say, ten years from now, you could get four ten, that means that probably eighty percent of the houses in Pecosin couldn't get four ten. You know, so, and, and it's probably similar types of numbers across, you know, the United States now, eighty percent, I just picked it up on hand. I don't have anything written down that says, you know, that all the units of Pecosin are, you know, you know. The, the point being is, you know, like, you know, my dad's old house had R twenty-two in the units and those units were, you know, you know, probably fifteen years old and they were put in a couple of years before twenty-two was outlawed, you know, you know, so, and you could still get it, you know, I had a R twenty-two at home, you know. So, you know, I don't think we're gonna run into that issue, you know, and I don't know what, what brand system they're quoting. Are they quoting Mitsubishi?
It's train and Mitsubishi, which is the same.
Yeah, so, you know, you're talking about systems, you know, themselves that have been proven for probably close to forty-five years between Europe and the United States. The RF systems have been around for thirty-plus years between the United States and Europe. So, you know, they're proven, proven system. I don't think, I think the risk, the risk is there.
Sure.
You know, but I think it's, you know, ten years from now, Mitsubishi could turn. you know, ten years from now, Mitsubishi could turn around and go fuck, I think it's going to, but, you know.
My concern is not the availability of it, but as soon as that law goes into effect, they're not going to be selling it at a premium price. It's the cost effectiveness.
What, what you can't get it anymore. That's the key. So you'll still be able to find four ten, you know, and?
But the price of it may be triple what you're paying for R.
Once they stop manufacturing four ten. But, you know, you got, the, the issue is, is the, the issue is the manufacture and sale of the units. They're still allowed to manufacture and sell the freon. So there's, you know.
But they're controlling the price, right?
They're controlling the price now.
Right, but it's not legal now. So as soon as it comes, you know, a higher commodity.
But we're seeing right now across other multifamily jobs, which is a typical other, you know, product that we turn around and see the RF systems then, going to the new freon is anywhere between fifteen and thirty five percent more expensive. And that is, that's a function of a couple of different things. It's a function of, of, of the systems themselves because the freon's more expensive and the systems are more expensive. There are some new code stuff that goes into what happens with the, with that freon. You know, almost all freons, they use propane as a, as a carrier, you know, so it's not all just a refrigerant in it. And with the new one, it's got a higher amount of propane in it, which makes it flammable, which, you know, causes some other issues with code and, you know, it would be a mess, I think, if we turned around and went, you know, everybody's concerns are a hundred percent valid. I don't want to negate, you know, anybody's concerns. I mean, they're all real concerns and they, you know, we could all point to, this is where they've come real.
The, to kind of summarize that, all, all the concerns are real. But the reality is if we don't do this system that's on the table now, there will be no project done in FY twenty five.
And then we can have a failure.
Then if something fails, which it predictably will, January, February, next winter with that boiler, the, the solution to that is something that none of us have the ability to find that kind of money. If you don't have a system to replace it already on order, you do a temporary system and they charge you about ten thousand dollars a day. It's, it's an extraordinary process to survive in the, over a course of a month or two months while you're waiting for a system to come and then you have to build it while the kids are in school. If the system fails and can't be repaired, the process is catastrophic, is the best way I can describe it. Having actually lived through that once and with a boiler failure in, in the winter and when you got to have kids in school, you can't have kids in school if the temperature is below a certain, a certain amount. I mean, it's catastrophic. So I, I, I know those, these are all important discussions, but they're, the new system can't be priced and installed is my understanding this summer. So the new freon system is off the table for that.
Long would take another probably four to six weeks. That's about how long it took to design this one on the entirety, so.
And there's no other cooperative? Are there any other schools around here that have this one?
No, we could even use an cooperative. Would be the, the engineering of this particular product versus the new, new product. And then getting that product ordered and shipped and installed, you know, they really have to have everything on the ground before June because it takes them all summer to do the install. And I, I watch this process daily, the year before, summer before last at the primary school. This is almost identical. And it's, it's a comprehensive system. The, you know, they're actually installing units in each room that are married to, several rooms are married to one larger unit that's installed on, on the roof. So it's a, it's ambitious to do it over the summer anyway. And if you lost any time without the actual equipment sitting on the ground ready to install the day the kids walk out. Because we, we landed that primary school job a few days before school started. So I think it's important to just know that whole scope in addition to the fact that the unknown about this new product is, is also out there and a, and a concern.
Can you talk a little bit about the language on work mechanical and there, I don't know, it sounds like, I mean, it's big. Is that like a contractor that will come out and fix it for a certain next amount of years or something?
Right, yeah. So basically give us a, a fee and they will guarantee the quarterly and annual maintenance service on that for that, that fee. And we did the same thing with the primary school. And you know, that's, that's been very beneficial because you know, the, the new technology is in that compared to what we have in other builds is different. And they've even offered work to, to educate our maintenance guys on that as well, send them to classes and things of that nature on the system, so.
So that would be in addition, any kind of installation warrants?
Yeah, the, the system itself with the components will come with its own warranty, but this would be an additional upfront to Warwick to provide the maintenance and the, the service for that for the quarterly and annual.
And we included that in the primary project. It's been very helpful.
And then lifespans of these are a little shorter than like the water boiler frame, right? And they're probably fifteen years on this one.
Yeah, fifteen.
Fifteen versus I think twenty two is now what the boiler chiller units are, are going for somewhere in that range. So you, you, you lose a few years, but the other interesting thing about, and this is all stuff I learned the summer before last when looking at this, this, this system, is if a unit has issues, it's rusty or whatever, you don't necessarily have to replace the whole system because you can replace individual units that serve as certain classrooms. So they won't all fail necessarily at the same time. Now, I think it's wise to plan on having a conversation, whoever's sitting on this school board fifteen years from now, probably maybe more like twelve years from now, talking about replacing this system as a whole. But if you did have one fail, you can go in and replace one unit that serves several classrooms or several spaces. Whereas with a boiler and chiller, when the boiler goes, you're shocked. Your whole system is down because you're just pushing air, quarter heated air from boilers and chillers around the whole building. So when it goes, there's no temporary fix or even short fix for the, for the replacement. But that's a good question. The fifteen years versus about twenty two years is a, is a difference.
Other questions? Any questions?
Are you going to take a motion?
So the motion is going to be, the subject from the email?
It's right here under A, other matters.
Make sure I'm reading what I want here. Is it motion to approve the reallocation, that one? Okay, all right. So can I get a motion to approve the reallocation of capital improvement funds, one point five million, to fund the Pecosin High School HVAC project, summer of twenty twenty five, and approve for superintendent to be allowed to enter into contract with Warwick Mechanical Group for Pecosin High School HVAC project, summer twenty twenty five?
So move, Mr. Chief?
I'll second. I'll second. Questions?
I guess just one last question. I just want to interrogate the, the experts and the consultants that have designed this. They've said this R four ten system will save us a lot of money.
Yes, they said, you know, their projections, what they did, they've sent twenty to forty percent with the utilities and maintenance. Call a stall system for its high speed.
And we've seen somewhere at the primary school, correct?
Do you have a question? Ms. Carl, do you have a vote?
I'm just going to go this way because I don't want to teach you. Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Goodell, or Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Mr. Claude?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Place here, DeBose?
Aye.
Chair Burridge?
Aye.
The house is seven zero.
Ms. Germsky, February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, special school board meeting.
Woo-hoo, woo-hoo.
Thank you.
That was a quick meet. Not too bad.
No, I'm not going to play today.
No, that's right, yeah. We're, we're getting back on a better schedule.